One, thanks for waiting. Just in for the record. Never mind. Okay. As opposed to doing it before, I was just going to mention it beforehand, but we should do a three, I'll do a three. We'll try this once again. Welcome to our public council meeting of the borough of Marsville. I regret to inform you that our president Ted Parker could not make it tonight. So yours truly will have to take over the duties as president. And with that, I will ask you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forged in stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call of the council members?
Mayor Anderson?
Here. Here.
Councilman Lewis?
Here.
Councilman Murray?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
And Councilman Sherlock?
Here.
And Borough Solicitor?
Scott Holbert on behalf of Flagrant Associates.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll move on to announcements and presentations. Are there any announcements?
Yes, prior to tonight's meeting, Borough Council met an executive session where matters involving the collective bargaining negotiations and personnel issues involving the police department were discussed.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Please limit yourself to three minutes and give your name and address before addressing council. And I have only one name here, Deborah Colgan.
Good evening, Deborah Colgan, 120 West Henderson Avenue. I'd like to step past the legal issues surrounding Williamson Park and its ridiculous blight designation for my comment tonight and to consider other realities facing this council regarding Williamson Park. Council needs to state a vision for the use of Williamson Park. Sitting on your heels only demonstrates that you are waiting for a developer to give you a plan that you can accept. If the borough indeed intends to utilize the area for recreational purposes, then, and it should, for a variety of reasons that have been presented to you repeatedly, then we need to get going. Now, we don't have the money for planning grant, but we still can and need to begin planning. It only takes our time, not money, to listen, to process, and to develop a plan. And I want to stress the hour in our statement, in my statement. This must be a community endeavor. The use of our public lands should not be solely at the hands of one or two people in the administration deciding what we need for our parks. This kind of management of our parks diminishes public opinion, public needs, and public wants. Successful park systems rely on community input. The borough manager needs council's direction on what to pursue. I beg you to set up an effective process. Using your committees is a way to do that. You have a Parks and Recs committee, utilize that framework to collaborate. We have multiple studies and plans to draw from. We have incredibly talented community members who can step, who can bring realistic ideas to the table. And we have a community that is ready to step up and do our part. This newly formed council has had six months to get situated. Now, let's see some action on addressing Williamson Park's larger needs. Let's make a plan. I'd like to also thank council members, specifically Nancy Sherlock and Catherine Price Inglahard, who are bringing the community together by organizing cleanups of our public spaces right now. It truly makes a difference. Participating with members of the community, with our community on a shared goal is extremely satisfying, and I encourage all to join in. On last night at the recent Finance Committee meeting, I learned a number of disturbing issues regarding the borough's American Rescue Plan money, including unknown expenditures and a plan to use all the money for infrastructure needs that have long been ignored. First, it seems like no amount of financial auditing or even having a finance director is sufficient to keep our books straight. It can't be that hard. I hope that we will hear more on this issue tonight. I also understand that the borough is under, I really do understand we're under severe financial distress. I get it. But I hope that, but we can parlay a very small amount of Rescue Plan money now to make steps towards improvements at Williamson Park. We don't need much to first spark now. There are many small projects that we could do. We are missing opportunities to parlay our small amount into a larger one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make any public comment? Okay. Moving on, next item is approval of minutes. I understand that we're still waiting for a copy, a draft of the May, minutes for the May regular meeting. We do have a cop, we did get a draft of the June 21st regular meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes, I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, there was a memo sent with corrections, so I don't know what we're approving. Are we approving the original or are we approving the corrections, the original? Well, there were some errors in the original, so I can't vote to approve them. I don't agree with all the corrections that were sent. I felt some of them were picky and the idea that only one council person can decide what should be capitalized and what shouldn't is incorrect. But there were some errors that were found.
Would you prefer to approve the meeting minutes of June 21st with all of those corrections?
Because I don't agree with all those corrections.
So then we would need a motion to approve the minutes with whatever corrections everyone on council would like to see.
It could be, it could be tabled.
Yeah, considering the amount of disagreement over the verbiage in the minutes, let's table it till next month. In the meantime, we'll circulate a revised draft and see if we can reach a consensus on that.
Hey, Mr. President, would it be possible to have whoever does the minutes get them out in time for the next meeting? Is that an option?
It's not within my purview, I'm afraid.
Mrs. Danko, would it be possible to get minutes by that point, do you think?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lubin, I hadn't heard your full verbiage.
Okay, would it be possible for the next meeting to get minutes from, to get the minutes with all of these handwritten dubious corrections?
The issue is there's five pages of proposed changes. So I would need council's direction as to what changes you would want at this time. And we can certainly get those changes made and then provide those minutes from June at the next council meeting if we have a consensus of what changes would be wanted.
It's not possible to have it done the old system, the way the old system was and just assume these minutes will eventually show up? Ever you do them normally.
This was done the same way that-
Oh, it was, okay, my mistake.
Yes.
Well, can't someone go through and not take the changes but make the corrections by listening to the video and fixing the written version? Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
Can I just make a comment? I asked a question first, apologize.
Asking a question of me?
Judith.
Oh, I didn't address the Judith.
We can go through and we can certainly view what we feel the changes are needed. Or we can objectively look at the five page of notes. It's up to council what direction you would like us to take.
I'd just like to say that it's a very sad commentary on this council that we can't even agree on minutes. And we're all responsible for that. So I think we need to, between now and the August meeting, we need to reach some sort of consensus on how to do these minutes. This is an embarrassment and we can't operate like this. So I'm sorry who was ever in charge. If that means I have to do the minutes, I'll do the damn minutes. Yes, Ms. Sherlock, you had a comment?
Yes, I was the person who sent out the, what I agree, changes to be made. I don't think we should have a set of minutes where we don't capitalize proper nouns, the word "I." We have, there were a number of changes. I appreciate Helen that you saw a few that should be fixed. But I guess I have a higher bar that when you start a sentence or when you use a capital, I mean, someone says a certain name, you should capitalize it. The streets weren't even, the streets weren't spelled correctly.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here, Ms., I get your-
So if everybody wants to vote on it, go right ahead. I'll just say no, that's okay. I don't want to belabor this, I don't want to talk about it for half an hour. I don't care if we change anything, it's fine. If this council approves it, then that's, so be it. I'm fine with that.
No, as I just, as I said before, I think that there's been enough disagreement and discussion and angst over these minutes that we're not going to accept them as written. We're going to figure out a way to get them done correctly. And from my own personal standpoint, our minutes have generally been verbatim transcripts of the meetings, and that's not what minutes are, but that's a whole, that's a discussion for another occasion. But we need to get, we need to get our hands around this. How can we operate as a council, month in and month out, if we don't even have a clear record as to the actions that we take? And it shouldn't, it shouldn't require us to go to the video and watch a replay of the whole meeting. So I will take it upon myself to figure out how with this council and with the borough manager and the staff, how we can put together a better mousetrap. But we can't, we can't be arguing over minutes every month. So I have, I don't know if anyone has anything to add to that, but I don't know there's much more we can say. This is an embarrassment and we need to fix it.
May I ask, other than the punctuations and the capitalizations and so forth, is there anything of substance that was an issue? Because if there wasn't, I think that we can certainly fix punctuations and we can certainly fix capitalizations and things of that nature. But I didn't see anything of substance that would be incorrect. Am I wrong?
There were a couple of things.
Mr. Vice President, can I just mention two of them? When the chief of police mentioned Harvey Cedars, it says Harvest Feters.
Let's stop, no, we're not gonna go, we're not gonna go through every, every change of the five pages, Nancy, we're not gonna do that, okay?
I'm not asking-
We're not gonna do that. We all got five pages of handwritten changes 36 hours ago. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that I went through all of them with the printed transcript by my side, but this has got to end. We're not, we're not fighting over capitals, capital letters and commas. This is a basic approach. We obviously don't have an agreement here how to prepare minutes, how to review minutes, and how, in a civilized way, to reach a consensus on them. So we're gonna figure that out. And I hope I have a report for the public in August that, or at least me or Mr. or President Parker has a report that can be a little bit more positive and constructive than where we are right now. So moving on-
Well, you, there was a motion in a second, so you can either make a motion to table or take the vote.
I'm sorry, yeah, is the current motion to table or is the current motion to approve?
The current motion right now was to approve the minutes by Mr. Lubin and was seconded by Ms. Murray, so-
I'll take, I'll make a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
And we'll need a vote on that then.
Okay. Better do a roll call, Virginia. And this is to table the motion to approve the minutes of June 21st.
Okay, yes. Is it over?
Yes. I guess, I don't really answer.
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Josh? Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Oh, Ted's not here, okay. Thank you.
Now, the motion, so the motion carries and we'll table that motion, that review until the August meeting.
Carrie, what's the count?
Six, one.
Six, one.
Okay, moving on to the next portion, Finance. Treasurer's report that will be provided at a later date, I understand?
Correct.
We're still in the process of trying to hire somebody to help in that capacity. Second, we have call for motion to approve the bill list. Can I have a motion?
I so moved. Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
For the public's knowledge, I can just add the total. This budget, this bill list, total for the bill list is $247,974. So just to let the public know how much we do spend every month, and everything's needed.
Anything else?
No. No.
Excuse me?
Are we called for vote?
Yeah, okay, let's put it to a vote. Can we have a roll call, Virginia? To approve the bill list.
So approved, yes.
Do you want them?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Josh? Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Motion carries, what was the score?
Seven, zero.
Seven to nothing. Anatomously, as they say. And now we move on to reports. Mayor's report. Mayor Brud, do you have a, Fred Anderson, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you very much. As always, I'd like to thank our public who comes out and comments. We had only one tonight, which I think was a record that I've seen, but it was still nice. I know a lot of people take their time to watch this broadcast at home as well, and they keep themselves involved in many ways, whether it's contacting myself, one of us council people, and many others. And I just thank those people to take their time, to care enough to involve every month. So I want to, I want to make sure that's something that I say every month, it's important. Hope everybody had a great Fourth of July. A nice safe Fourth of July. As a pet owner, I know a lot of people get concerned with anxiety with their pets, with fireworks, but other than that, I hope everybody had a good day with family, some good food, and just a good celebration of the birthday of the United States of America. Gotta love that, right? We've got a couple of great things coming up, more and more stuff going on as we get back to normal life after the last couple of years. Our NNO is returning, our National Night Out is returning on August the 2nd, on Tuesday night. And so we've got a lot going on. If you haven't seen the flyer yet, we've got helicopter, ambulance, we've got vehicle tours, we've got, they're doing DCNR, we'll be doing environmental education, face painting, children ID like has been done in the past. And there's many, many, many other things that are gonna be going on. We're actually having a meeting about it tomorrow, so we'll be blasting out some more information. We are gonna be showing Toy Story 4 in the park. It's a great family movie, great movie for anyone. You don't have to have a family to love Toy Story 4, to be honest, it's hilarious. And then afterward, for the first time to my knowledge in a long time, we're gonna have fireworks in the park. So that's pretty exciting to me, speaking of fireworks, I guess. I'd like to make sure we give a quick shout out to a woman by the name of Jen, who used to organize this event, either you know or you don't, I'm not gonna blast her last name out there, but she was a great steward of the event, kept it going for several years, did a great, great job. And she's probably one of the many reasons that people are excited to see this return. And it's also not just a great opportunity to get together with our whole community and our community's neighbors, but to celebrate the people that take care of us all year round. It's very important. And we have, like I said, we had a meeting about this tomorrow, so I want to thank some of the people who are working on it this year. And we've had from the Solid Rock Youth Center, a couple gentlemen by the name of Zach and Adam. We've had Chief George McClay involved heavily. We've had Chief Matt Weedenhaver involved, former mayor Tom Wazniewski, a couple of gentlemen from our sheriff department, and so many more people. I hate giving out thank yous because it's always the ones you don't remember to give out, but we're gonna be doing that a lot more over the next couple of weeks. We've got a ton of great sponsors and it's really shaping up to be a nice, big event, a great, a national night out. So join us Tuesday night, August 2nd. Catherine, Councilwoman over here, will tell you a little bit later about a food truck event that we have coming up. And then we're gonna move on from there and do the annual Labor Day picnic, which I'm excited about. I'm gonna get, jump more into that. I'm gonna start, get a lot more stuff booked. I already have some stuff booked for it, but I wanna wait to blast out information on that till after the National Night Out. That'll give us another whole month to get all the information we need to everybody, so come on. That's three great events, just off the top of my head, and I'm sure there's a couple more I'm not thinking of. I think Andrew will tell you about the car show that's coming up. So business is picking up, so there's a lot of fun things to look forward to. So try to get yourself out to them, tell your friends, tell your neighbors. Not everybody sees Facebook, not everybody sees these meetings, so just get the word out as much as you can. I wanna reiterate something very strongly that I said last month, and this is something that I will say every month. We've, myself, the chief, the council, and the manager are all in negotiation, not negotiation, that's the wrong word. We're all in talks and all looking for ways to replenish, replace, and strengthen our police department. And this is something that is a major, major issue for me. It's a major, major issue for our town. As I've told everyone, I've campaigned at all four wards for five years, so I know what an important issue it is. So it is something that I am focused on and constantly paying attention to and will be for about the next three and a half years at least, maybe seven and a half. And that's about it, but I just want to say one other thing. I was on vacation for two weeks, which I love. Thank you, Father God, for getting all my family home safe. We had about 30 family members down there, all of them either living here or from Marsville, so that was kinda nice. So it will be, obviously Marsville, it can come up a lot, right? So I'll be catching up on my email. So if you're on that list that you sent me an email in the last week, week and a half, and I didn't get back to you, you can expect a call in the next couple of days. With that being said, I wish everybody happy rest of the July, and we will see you at National Night Out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, the police chief's report, chief.
To continue on the National Night Out theme, it's free food, everything's free. Everybody hear me, free? Everything's free. The borough is not contributing any money to this. I saw on Facebook today, apparently a couple of people are asking, how much is this costing the borough? Nothing. Okay, I have zero dollars in my community events budget. We do have a very large donation by Britton Industries. Working on getting other money from industries, but right now, everything is paid for by contributions. So the couple of people that have put out there, how much is this costing us from our tax dollars? Absolutely zero. And we are not charging anything that night to anybody.
You're saying this cost the borough nothing and it cost everybody nothing to come and eat and have a good time that night?
Yes.
That's amazing.
Yes. So that's gonna be a very nice night. As everybody sees, we have a guest host. Mike Jarrett from Fox 29 is going to be there as the guest host that night. He is also donating his time. So it's something different that we've never done before. Mike Jarrett's a real character, and I think he's really gonna, you know, do a lot for the spirits of everybody that's there. As everybody knows, I sent out a email today from the Attorney General that he talked about the lack of police officers we have in the state of Pennsylvania, the lack of being able to retain and recruit. We have a chance now to get our department back up to a little bit about where we belong. I have seven officers on the street, I have guys working multiple hours overtime, and they're getting tired. And it's costing us a lot of money in overtime. It's not part-time overtime, it's full-time overtime. And I can, at this point, say no to anybody, it's vacation season. I have no other choice. So my budget's gonna be blown out of the water. Everybody know that, okay? My budget has been the same for the last basically eight years and has not changed. I've gone down from 11 officers down to eight. Now I'm down to seven with one being hurt. One is now being recruited by Lower Makefield, I have one that may go out on retirement. I may be in trouble really soon. It's time to move. We gotta move on this motion tonight. We have $450,000 from ARPA. The president came and said, please use that money for law enforcement. Please do it. We have another $450,000 coming in November from ARPA. It's supposed to be used for law enforcement. Please do it, we need it. If I get down to five or six guys, I don't know what that schedule's gonna look like. I worked three shifts last week. I can't do anymore. We need the police officers. Without the police officers and a good police department, your town's gonna go down. You're not gonna have to worry about these parks that you want to talk about. You need a good, solid police department. And it's going away. I've talked to you guys over and over about that, that we're going in the wrong direction. So if we do not hire these two officers tonight, I can't really predict where we're going. There is no five-year strategic plan in this borough. Where are we gonna go? Do you want to get down to five officers, you want to get down to six officers? You want to bring state police in? Do we want to combine with another police department? We got it, we, it's time to really move on things. I want to know where the $900,000 is planned to go. Why aren't we using that for the police department? Like the president has said. And I'm not a fan of this president, but he came out and said, you need to use it for police departments, you need to hire. The attorney, this is, that memo that came out today, what a coincidence. And I'm sure he, no, he didn't write that for George. That went out to every police chief. We're having problems getting officers. We have a chance to get a couple, a couple good officers. Officers that are ready to work tomorrow, ready to be full-time tomorrow. We've really gotta go in that direction, guys. And at some point, I, and I shouldn't say this, but I'll probably get in trouble and you'll say bad things about me later, but your police chief has more knowledge and more experience than anybody here on the board. And nobody cares. Not one person calls and says, George, how are we making out? Are we gonna be okay, are we gonna have enough? There is never a meeting here to sit down and talk about where are we going. I'm never invited to the back room to talk about your police negotiations, to talk about your manpower, to talk about your future, your police department. It's time. It's time. I've been here almost nine years now. Same budget, less manpower, less equipment out front. We gotta do something, guys, it's time. It's time. All right? Any questions I can help you with? Okay, with that being said, thank you.
With that being said, first of all, chief, I can recall at least three or four times in the last 12 months when you have been in that back room with us at executive sessions. So I don't think we've shut you out completely.
Not over these issues, sir. Not over these issues, sir.
Perhaps, but but I just want to make it clear that we we are including you in executive sessions where where it's required and maybe contrary to previous councils where you weren't even invited to speak.
Well, you had no choice, because there were grievances that we now have that I have to be part of. You really had no choice but to invite me on that. But when it comes down to the police negotiations, because down to hiring of police officers, nobody's inviting me into that table.
Well, yeah, and more importantly, tied in with that, you're not going to be, although I agree with what the chief and what the mayor have to say about the need for adequate police force, in fact, that's what I campaigned on three years ago, it was a big problem then, and still a big problem. But we have not yet resolved the bigger problem of where the money comes from to pay for that. And, you know, I'll leave it to the borough manager perhaps to explain in greater detail, but it's my understanding that there is no $900,000 windfall that is that's been dropped into our laps that's available to hiring new police officers. And therefore, the two action items that we had on the on the agenda, one was one to certify the list of the eligibility list for hires for new full-time officers, and the other, the motion to hire two full-time officers, we had we had decided in the executive session to the table for another, at least for another month, while we tried to find the money for to pay for those. And I know that's not what you want to hear, Chief, but that's that's where we are.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
I was here downstairs, my financial manager, when $450,000 was electronically put into our funds, and we are having another $450,000 in November, unless something has changed and the governor has said, out now, please spend your money. It's there, $900,000. So if that went somewhere, that was supposedly put into a separate account. I don't know where that is, but we still have another $450,000 coming in, more than enough to pay for an officer. An officer costs you $75,000 approximately the first year. And then we have an EIT now coming in. It doesn't, even if you don't, if even if you just look at where our future's going to be, we're at seven officers now, hiring full-time officers just to fill in the gaps, and the possibility of losing two of them. What are we going to do with five and six officers? Am I going to put one guy on the street? You got, the money's there, the money was there, okay? And the money, there's still more money coming in. So I beg to differ with you, sir, but it is, was there. I saw it with my own two eyes. So for you guys to take that off the, that's, your public safety is now going back steps. Not good.
Can you respond to any of them?
Any comment?
Yes, please.
Even though I don't believe this is the forum to have this discussion as we are right now, I believe that this should this should be done in a different forum. There was the beginning of ARPA funds that were deposited into the borough's coffers, and the borough waited until the rules were changing in April to do any spending. We have one item that's on the agenda this evening that's that's been needed for years, and we're moving forward with that item. There have been several meetings in the past year depicting where those funds are going to be spent. We've all talked about it, we've talked about it at budget time and so forth. Those funds are a one-time fund, you won't see those funds again. Council has made the decision that it is not in the budget this year to hire officers, although they're continuing to have talks as to what can we do, how can we work around some of these issues, and they'll continue to have more discussion. But with the unknown of what the budget will be next year, to hire more employees for the borough with funds that are coming to us with a one-time entrance into the borough and not having those funds the year after, you need to be able to know that you have in your budget moving forward, the ability to continue to keep the officers and to fund the increases that will take place after they're here a year, the amount of funds it will take to pay for insurances and so forth. It doesn't cost us $75,000, it costs us more than that, and in the next year, it will even cost us more. The council's well aware of all of these issues, and they are working towards resolution the best that they can. They're reviewing items to discuss more about the ARPA funds. We had a deficit from our budget for several years in a row. At this time, some of those funds have filled that deficit. In the beginning of the year, those funds would not have been able to do that without proving the exact amount of money that the deficit was. Now that the rules have changed in April, and that is why we waited to see what those rules would be, we are able to do other items with those funds that we would not have been able to do in the beginning of the year up until April. We've been very cautious, some municipalities have not, because they have the funds to pay back. If we weren't cautious, we don't have the funds to pay those funds back. We had to be cautious. We've been commended for being cautious. So it's really a discussion of council as to how they would like to move forward with many of these issues. We've had discussions. If if council would like to sit and have other discussions with the chief, I think that is a wonderful idea. I think it's necessary. We're right around the corner with budget discussions. There's no reason why we can't sit down and have these discussions with a full council with budget discussions as to how we're going to proceed with the funds that we do have, with the funds that we'll be getting, and also how our budget will look next year. So we can sustain keeping employees and not doing something that's temporary, and then we 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 spin our wheels, we spend some funds that we really don't have and we don't have moving forward, and now what do we do? Where do we come up with the funds to keep the employees? These are all issues and items of contention that really need to be dealt with, and we don't have any firm information as to what the EIT will bring us in the future. We're waiting, we're doing a waiting game. So July, August, and September, when we get these funds in October or November, that will be a semi-gauge as to how we'll be moving forward next year. And will it be an accurate gauge? Most likely not. Most municipalities begin their 1% earned income tax in December, and it takes place in January. Not everyone is notified at this point to know that this has to take place with their payroll. We've reached out to everyone in the borough, the businesses and so forth, it's been advertised everywhere, but it's going to take some time for that to take place. So we don't know the amount of funds that we'll be bringing in. It's a guessing game. Our budget next year will be very complicated because there are many factors as to what we really know and don't know as to the income funds that will be approaching us. Will we still have the municipal authority in our house downstairs and providing us funds that they've been providing us towards our budget? That's an unknown at this time. How much money will we obtain from the earned income tax? It's an unknown at this time. We're going to work the best we can with what we have right now, and we're going to continue to work together as a team so that we can provide better services, that we can hire employees. We're going to work as a team to figure out the best, the best scenario and the best way to do this, but to pull from funds that we temporarily have and we don't know what our future is. This council has to be concerned, as anyone would be. You certainly can't buy a car when you have a $5,000 gift that was given to you in 2022, and then in 2023, you don't have that gift anymore, and in 2024, you don't have that gift anymore. You have to know what your budget is to move forward. It's imperative to know that. And and that is exactly what this council has been doing. They've been discussing things, they've been talking about what can we do, what can't we do? This has been going on for some time, and and everyone understands the need for officers, there's no doubt about that, but we're trying to figure out the best way to do what the borough needs to do with the financial situation it's in and move forward. And and I hope that explains most of what we've discussed, and if anyone has any questions, I'm open to them. But again, I don't think this is the forum for that. We'll be discussing, we'll having, we'll be having meetings after August regarding budget, and and we really need to sit down and as a group and have some some full discussion.
Yeah, in any case, one thing I do agree with both the chief and the mayor on is that we need more communication, and I certainly encourage and support any effort that we could put together a meeting within the the confines or or within within the restrictions of the the sunshine laws, that we could meet as a as a group with the chief and with the mayor to talk about some of the long-range issues and also, you know, why things aren't getting done the way that they want them to. But I think we we need to do that. I think the chief is right, that we should talk to him more often, and I would welcome more input from that side.
Chief, let me say one second first, is that okay, Mr. Vice President?
Certainly.
First of all, thank you, because I think that's a great idea, and I support getting together for communication, like always support more communication. I also like to reiterate that I I'm glad that you pointed out earlier that one of the things you ran on was public safety and supported a police, and I think it's other people here probably did the same thing. In fact, I know they did, and that's another reason I know how important it is, because the last group of people that sat up here that didn't support our police department, they're no longer here for various reasons, but they're but they're not here. And and I understand, you know, putting my borough hat on too, and this is what I keep telling everybody, I put my borough hat on too, and I understand dollars and cents, and and but I also understand common sense, and we don't find a way to, we've got eight pretty smart people up here, and if we can't find a way to make this happen, then maybe we're not the right eight people, because if we lose one or two more officers before we can have a couple more meetings, we have a disaster on our hands. And again, Judith's right, this didn't all mean to come out in public, but but here we are, and it is true. So Chief, I'm sorry to cut you off, but go ahead, thank you.
Like I said, we started out with $450,000 from the ARPA money. What rules you speak about? Only one that's really, that we really know about is that it will never be looked at and audited by the federal government. It was, they said, they came out and said that. Anywhere, do I have to find this stuff and give it to you? Anywhere under $10 million is not going to be audited. But it also said that it was not there to fix past mistakes of bouncing your budget and reducing your taxes. We're still, so there's that pot. We're still, there's still another $450 coming in. You put this, take half of that, and that's going to put you into a couple of years for a couple of officers.
You don't have a couple of years, George.
Okay, then you're not going to have police officers either. That's what I'm trying to tell you. If I lose Chris Reardon and an officer that is one of the older guys that could retire and is talking about it, I'm down. Does everybody count that? Five officers, 24 hours a day? I don't know how you want me to do that. The money's got to come from somewhere. Wherever that $450,000 went to, even if you, even if you're saying that you spent 200 on the budget, on the past budget, you still have $250,000 left. Where's that going? We're buying a gas boy for $25,000. That's great. It's still, we still have 225,000. We got to put our priorities in the right place.
Did you see the roof in the back, too?
Yeah, I did.
We've got puddles.
Okay, I understand that, and I I will have no manpower. That's going to be the problem. And when that time does come, I'll be standing right here going, okay, this is the disaster that I've talked about. I've talked about this for eight years, that we had to get this together, and we haven't. The last group that the mayor just spoke about, cut and cut and cut and cut. Well, this group is just not supplying, even though they see it coming. They see the storm coming, and nobody wants to address it. So if I lose these three officers that are on this list, we have to start over again with another civil service test. That could be another year or two down the line. Guys, something has to change. Something has to change. You have to fund your police department. Your police department, I'm sorry, John, is your most important department out there.
And it consumes three quarters of our budget.
You're right.
I mean, so we're not arguing whether we need a police department, whether we want a police department, of course we do.
Okay, but where's that money? That's what I want to know. And that money's still coming in, and the EIT's going to be coming in. The other places that have an EIT had no problems over COVID. I know we're just starting this up, but there's going to be money coming in.
But we don't know how much.
Okay.
We can only guess.
Do you understand I got to, you know?
But what we're trying to do for the first time in, I guess, decades, is we're trying to 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 come up with a balanced budget and stick to it, not a budget just for purposes of because we have to, we have to, at the end of the year, produce something and then spend whatever money we we want to as we go along. We're trying to adhere to a budget to to develop some sort of economic discipline, financial discipline in this office.
And for eight years, I have.
Well, now, so now the rest of us are trying to catch up to you.
Okay.
Okay?
But what I'm saying is, you have to get a couple extra guys in here, just so when the couple of guys go, we can put it on the street. We're going to, like the mayor said, what happens in the next month? I lose one, I lose two.
We 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 hear you, Chief.
Okay. The warning's out there.
That's right, and we've gotten letters from your, from some of your officers with the same pleas, we we know what the situation is.
Okay, I'm very disappointed in the actions that was taken tonight.
And I'd like to thank the chief, because he has stayed within the same budget for so many years, and he, I mean, while he stands there and admits, he may not be able to do it this year. He's been a good steward of the budget, he's been a good steward of the borough. Additionally, during the height of COVID, our budget was actually cut by, when I say our budget, the police budget was actually cut by about $100,000 during the height of COVID. So and he still is maintaining what he has for the last eight years, so I give you a lot of credit for that.
My officers are here 24 hours a day, the other people are working from home. Now that money that could be given to them is not being given to them as a reward for doing that. What we're doing now is we're slapping them in the face, saying, your job's not that important.
I think this is inappropriate commentary.
I think I think we've gone far enough with this. Let's turn to the manager's report.
The capital projects we have going on are the, one of the Bridge Street project with PennDOT. I've been collaborating with PennDOT. We're using an ECMS system, and with that system, we are the approver and so forth of the project. We're highly involved in this project because we are the pass-through for PennDOT and the grant that's taking place. The item of concern that I had was that the borough originally needed to come up with the funds to fund this project and then would be reimbursed. We by no means could do that. So I did have a meeting and a discussion. At this time, we will be able to, once we get the invoice from the contractor, we'll be able to submit for reimbursement immediately, and then we will have to pay the contractor within 10 days. This will alleviate the borough to have any financial hardship over this program. So I'm happy to report that at this time, because it was a great item of concern as to how we could possibly fund this project without having the funds in our coffers, as you have been hearing recently. So I'm very happy about that. Also, I had a meeting with a possible donor for the engineering regarding the possibility of resurrecting the funds for the previous Manor Park grant application. The CDBG program would provide us with $250,000 for work to be done at that playground. I did have a wonderful discussion with the possible donor. We're going to see if we can work with our engineering company to see if we can get those funds taken care of, that would not be touching any of the borough coffer funds, it would be simply through donations. Hoping to hear back by the next council meeting to report to you as to whether or not we can do this. Council did approve following through with this. If I'm able to... If I'm able to obtain the donation funds, so I will certainly keep council updated. The administration and finance is pretty self explanatory as to all of the other items that are on there. At this time, you have not received a treasurer's report. We're still working with Tom Josiah and company. They will continue to work with us. There are some items that have not been provided. The 2021 budget information, I'm sorry, not budget, financial information had not been provided to the council, and we're still awaiting that. Once Tom Josiah alerts us as to he's ready to provide that to me, I will then be providing that to council. Yes, we have been in dire straits with the borough finances for the past several years. And we're still working through some of the deficiencies that have been taking place. And this hasn't taken place just in a couple of months. It's been a couple of years. It's been several years, more than a couple. So we're working diligently to get our finances in the place where they need to be so we can work forward and move forward in the diligent manner that we're talking about as a council to have a real budget, to have the money in that budget, to be able to provide services and monies to each of the departments moving forward. Thank you very much. I don't know if anyone has any questions regarding my report.
Mr. Vice President?
Ms. Sherlock.
This is to Judith. I said, it sees, I see that you were reviewing applications for a financial officer. So have we received many or not many or?
At this time, I have seven.
Oh, okay. And I don't know if this is something that could be, I just don't remember this, the lawsuit with Levering. I don't remember discussing that, but I know we can't discuss lawsuits out here, but.
Certainly, it's regarding an accident that occurred around the Amtrak train trellis area. Do you recall that?
No.
It happened about two and a half, three years ago, almost now.
Oh.
It's been a good amount of time, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
Do we have any committee reports? Catherine?
Thank you, Vice President. So we had our monthly Parks and Recreation meeting on June 28th here at the borough. And attendance was myself, chairwoman, Bob Paul, councilperson, and members of the Parks Committee, Nancy Sherlock, councilperson, member of the Parks Committee. And Andrew was not able to attend that night. Debbie Colgan and Jane Berger from the residents were also present. We opened the meeting at 7:00 PM, and the main minutes were approved. Upcoming events, Catherine will be doing a flyer to distribute the August 5th food truck event and the October 9th food truck event. And then Catherine filled out a proper request for the date for the Labor Day. Mayors may need to confirm that it was already approved by the council earlier this year. The basketball nets, two nets have been installed, and the other two poles are to hold them have been installed. When time allows, the other two nets will be, we done. There was some, I got some requests to talk about parking on the grass there. I did send a note to, to find out if we needed to put some signs up. General discussion, Debbie Colgan had mentioned that there's campers at the preserve, not much cleanup, but volunteers to get out to clean that up. And discussion regarding the Manor Park Playground, what equipment and when will it be taken down with our insurance company as requested. And reminder, painting the old pool shack on July 10th from 9:00 to noon or until we're done. And both Debbie and I will reach out to volunteers. Meeting was adjourned at 8:15. Just a report, we had a great success. We had nearly 20 people show up to paint. It was a great event. A lot of people came by, lots and lots of positive comments on Facebook, and we want to do it again. And just a follow up on a couple of things. Judith and I talked about Manor Park and what was constitute, what was part of Cloverleaf. And so I did, Judith get ahold of Jeff at RDA, and he said it is part of their part, but they were going to section that off and give it back to the borough. But just, and for council and Helen, we had talked about whether that money, that million dollar money to remediate that area, and you thought it was gone. It is not gone. We still have that to remediate that area. So that was good news.
It's there to remediate the Cloverleaf property that used to be a dump.
Yes, yes. So then, because our committee is concerned about all the parks, I did go over and I talked to Judith about the other day about some of the concerns about the equipment and looking at it. So I went through and found regulations that the Consumer Product Commission of 2015 for public safety. And here's only a handful of pictures, but I have 32 more of this equipment. And we're, grass is not an appropriate padding by law. Well, I've got some, we have to have suitable surfaces, materials of six to nine inches, depending on the equipment. It can be pea gravel, sand, shredded rubber mulch, and special wood mulch. Concrete and asphalt or other hard surfaces should not be indirect kind of under a playground equipment. If you take pictures and go all around, you'd be appalled at what our kids are playing on. It's, there's concrete jagging out. Well, obviously, you guys look and pass it on. So that's, that's something that we need to address to make it, that most of that equipment does need to be tearing down and replaced. So, so that's all I, oh, and also our food truck flyers are going out. It's been posted all over social media, and we're having it, again, no, pass it all the way down. Sorry, don't mean to be bossy. August 5th at the park. So I'm looking forward to a great event. So thank you. That's all I have to report.
Any other committees?
We have a finance committee.
I have something under reports, which we get. The report, I just want to mention that we got the zoning report, and I'm really pleased with how thorough they are and how they respond to, you know, so many, so many issues.
They mean isolate?
Yes. And, and it's just good to know where our money's going, I guess. But, and then, then also, I just want to shout out to John and his crew because he sends his report as well. And I mean, if you look at the numbers, obviously 22, a lot of less hours have been spent, but that's, they, you know, there's only 24 in a day. What are you going to do? So, thank you.
Good management.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Finance committee. I have to apologize. Unfortunately, we didn't get the notes from our secretary, so I'll get things typed up and I'll submit them for next month. My apologies.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to action items. 8A, call for motion to approve the 2022 to 2023 gasoline and diesel annual bid contract through the Bucks County Consortium. Unleaded regular gasoline, Riggins, Inc., at .0989 cents per gallon or dollars per gallon, market fluctuation pricing. On-road ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, Riggins, Inc., at .254 dollars per gallon, market fluctuation pricing. Off-road diesel fuel, number two dye diesel, no bids. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
A question here, Mr. Vice President. I assume those surcharges are on top of the market price of the day? That's what it means?
That is correct.
Okay. And this is a daily price fluctuation, a weekly price, or do we, has that been determined? It should be a daily price, the price the day they buy it.
Normally, it's a daily price, correct. Yes.
Okay.
And I might have obviated your question had I read the parenthetical delivery charge next to each of those quotes, so I apologize.
I was hoping, I just thought I'd clarify.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Pass seven to zero. 8B, call for a motion to approve the Portnoy Ordinance approving appointment of solicitor, interest assessment, and attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as part of unpaid municipal claims for delinquent sanitation fee accounts.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven to nothing. As I stated earlier, 8C and 8D have been deferred. 8E, call for motion after discussion to approve borough cosponsoring the 19th Annual Michael F. Sherlock Jazz Music Festival. Could I have a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Discussion.
I just have a question. What level of support are you looking for from the council?
If the, the cost for the stage, which is $300, if that could be deferred, and a porta potty.
So Borough Code states that council people cannot benefit from being in their position. So I'm not too happy that this has been put on the agenda.
Vice President may speak.
Yes, please.
It was actually our president, Ted Parker, who really wanted to put this on the agenda and felt it was long overdue, this event.
Well, that's hearsay. He's not here to discuss, to tell us that.
She's talking. Helen, you don't like people interrupting you? Don't interrupt her.
He was the one that put this on the agenda, so that's not hearsay.
Although I do agree with Helen, that's irrelevant.
Okay, it doesn't matter, whatever.
But I would suggest that Ms. Sherlock might want to recuse herself from a vote on this.
As I said that I would, I have in the past, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Vice President, question. Is this not a private organization? Why are we doing this?
Well, I actually, I would like to, I was going to ask the borough manager if we have a policy on cosponsorship. And what was the criteria for approving cosponsorship, if any?
We do not have a policy for cosponsorship. At this time, the requests are placed on the agenda, and it's really a council discussion and a vote as to what council would like to see happen.
Vice President may speak.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a nonprofit organization, and it benefits the Sherlock Foundation, which supports cancer research. This has been an annual event for nearly 20 years. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I don't, I certainly am not casting aspersions on the foundation. I know that they do good work. But I think the question for us as keepers of the public trust is, are our taxpayers paying for this? You know, and that's why, so I want to get to what does cosponsor mean? You said that it means paying for the porta potties, paying for, there's a, there's a fee normally for an event? Are we waiving the fee?
It would be the waiving of the $300 fee, and I believe that they were asking not to have to supply the porta potties and to just utilize the bathrooms. Would I be correct?
No, that would be correct. I mean, the porta potty's down there now, but that was leftover from camp. I don't know how long they're going to be there. But there's, again, there's a policy that if you have, I think, 100 people, you have to have.
50.
50 people, you have to have a porta potty in addition to our two bathrooms.
Then what grounds can we, can we ignore that?
That's entirely up to this council, I believe. But, you know, if everybody's uncomfortable with this, then pull this one off as well. You know, I, I just, I brought it up. Ted had asked me about it, and I said, yes, I'll write a request and see where it goes. So it's entirely up to this council. It is September 10th. It's been approved through the borough hall. The paperwork has been submitted. I also apply, I also require insurance, which I do, which is something else that has to be purchased, but I'm not asking for that. This is an event that is, it is a free event. I'm not charging anybody any money to come to this event. It's a free event for the entire community. So again, it's council's decision. I will not be, I will not be voting.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call. Jenny, if you would.
Yes. Councilwoman Abelhard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Long?
No.
Councilwoman Lubin?
No.
Councilwoman Murray?
No.
Councilwoman Paul?
No.
Councilwoman Robinson? And Councilwoman Sherlock, you're staying from the region?
I'll call an abstention or, I mean, I would, if I abstain, if I abstain, I have to provide you with a written reason why. So I'll do that.
No, you don't.
Or just say no myself. No, I'm abstaining.
Okay, well, the motion has been defeated six to zero with, I mean, I'm sorry, five to one with one abstention? Okay, moving on. 8F, call for motion to authorize the chief of police to dispose of police patrol car 4606, a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FABP7BV3BX124635. The chief estimates a minimum of $600 for this. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Is this the car that's sitting at the motor vehicle place that's being used for parts?
Chief?
Chief?
I think there was a question for you.
The Crown Vic to dispose of, is this the one that's been sitting down at the Sanford Motors that's being used for parts or? Is the other Crown Vic? It died. Is that one going to get fixed? Are we going to be disposing of that one, too? Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven, nothing. 8G, call for motion to approve execution of Fuel Systems Services LLC, quote dated July 7th, 2022, for Marsville Borough Emergency Services Gas Boy System Equipment and Software in the amount of $21,134.96 to be paid for with the American Rescue Funds.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Vice President, I had a couple of questions. I see that Judith did distribute them. I'm just wondering, was the, was John going to answer those questions, Judith, or do you know?
I had sent an email to you, Nancy, and in everyone's packet this evening, I believe the answers are there. Do you see them?
Let's see. Okay, yes, I didn't get a chance to read that. So, so the, I had asked if the software upgrades are included, and it says that they are. We don't need new pumps, which is great. Page five, there was a package, it was listed as security packages, John, and I was just wondering which one, which category we fit into. There was basic reporting, advanced reporting. That was, it was this page. And I couldn't find, I
And I couldn't find, I couldn't find the characteristics to be the same as on the front page, so I didn't know.
Yeah, it is, it's, I thought you were asking about how it was going to be reported, the type of
No, no.
So you're asking?
No.
The char, I'd have to look at it, to be honest with you, that one right here in front of me.
So, okay. We may have advanced reporting or basic. I guess that's really the main.
It's, that's more, it's probably advanced. I think we decided that we were going to go with that.
Oh, that's, that's good, then.
Advanced, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So with the advanced reporting, does that mean that we'll know by car or by person how much gas is being pumped?
Yes, correct.
That's fantastic.
Thank you. Yes, it is. I look forward to it. Much needed.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Item 8H, call for motion to accept resignation of Library Board Member Eva Kastner Pushel. I apologize if I mispronounced that.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero.
I'd like to say thank you for the brief time that Eva has spent there. But she has been, she's taking more, more jobs on, and it causes her to travel more.
How much time was she there?
A year and a half, year and a half.
Okay, moving on to council committees and commission appointments. The Civil Service Commission, one six-year appointment to complete unexpired term, which expires January 21st, 2026.
Can you do him?
This is, this is from Ken Terry's resignation, apparently, on March 31st. We have a letter of interest from Clay B. Abertz, who's currently an alternate on the Civil Service Commission, and a letter of interest from Matt Wiedenhoffer. So should we?
Sorry, and we also have a late message from this evening from David.
And our former mayor, David Ravela, has also texted that he wants to be considered for that position as well. Do we vote?
Can I move?
You would, so, it's not like a motion, you just make nominations, open a period of nominations. Once all the nominations are made, then you will vote on the individual candidates.
Okay.
Vice President, I'd like to nominate Matt Wiedenhoffer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Clay Abertz, and then I'd like to nominate Matt Wiedenhaffer for the alternate position.
We know that Matt would consider the alternate if he only applied for the regular.
We do not, we do not. We do know that Mr. Abertz would consider staying on as the alternate if that was not the choice of making him a full-time person.
Yeah, he's been on it for quite a while.
I was going to, go ahead.
He's been on it for quite a while, so for me, it just makes sense to make him the regular committee person.
How long has he been an alternate, you know?
At least three and a half years. And I know that he's been really good about it. He has some military service.
And so as an alternate, does he attend most meetings?
He's been at all the meetings I've been at.
Anything else?
All right, so, Matt Wieden-
I have one quick, one quick comment. I'm on the board also. I've worked with Clay for, Clay's been filling in for, he filled in for me a couple of times with my work schedule. And he's totally up to speed. He, he, he's definitely an asset for the Civil Service Board. So I would, I would have no problem with him to collect. He's, he's very good.
Okay.
All right, with the two nominations, Mr. Wiedenhoffer was nominated first, so I would say vote on him first. If you get a successful vote, he will be the appointment. If not, then you would vote on Mr. Alberts.
Okay, for that, Virginia, let's have a roll call.
And this is for Matt Wiedenhoffer.
Matt Wiedenhoffer for the vacancy on the Civil Service Commission.
Full-time vacancy.
Councilwoman Egglehart?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavo?
No.
Councilman Lubin?
No.
Councilwoman Murray?
No.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson? Oh. And Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
It was three to four.
Two, three.
Correct.
Lost four to three. Okay, let's move on to Mr. Abertz.
Another roll call.
Yep.
Councilwoman Egglehart?
No.
Councilwoman Lavo?
Yes.
Councilman Lubin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Murray?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Sherlock?
No.
Five to.
Five to.
Five to. Mr. Abertz is the new regular member of the Civil Service Commission.
Do, Bob Paul, do we, Council President, do we want to ask Matt Wiedenhaffer if he wants to be an alternate? Or do we vote and send him a letter telling him he is?
I think we should ask him.
Okay.
And if he agrees, then we can vote him in next time.
Okay.
I think it's presumptuous to do it without his approval.
I agree.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
If I can just make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
As the way the votes went this evening, I'd like this council to remember that in the future, when we nominate somebody and we bring forward that they've been there for quite some time and think that they're qualified, that they consider that on all nominations, not just some. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the Library Board. One three-year appointment, remainder of unexpired term, which expires on March 1, 2024.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, ma'am.
I sent an email today, it was in your packet. It came to my attention just hours, well, I don't know, 36 hours ago, that Margaret Gould is not a resident of Marsville, so.
The search continues.
So the search continues, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other business? What do we got? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Borough officials?
I have something if I may. Actually, I'd just like to make mention to the public, if I'm sure they may have been aware because it's been advertised quite a bit, that 988 is the new designated three-digit dialing code that will route you directly to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. You will not be put on hold or asked to leave a message. And the trained counselors will listen and provide support if you need, need support at that time. Also, just a little bit of the canal update. The Canal Trail was named Trail of the Year, and there may be a celebration sometime in September. And the Pennsylvania budget has been passed, and there's significantly more money for Parks and Recreation. Also to mention that the new park manager is Brian Heath. The position was held by Devin Buzzard before. He took a position out in the western part of the state. And just for those who know, I mean, the water is very, very low. But the canal's been around since 1827, and it's had its ups and downs, and it will recover eventually.
I was shocked, it's like bone dry for a quarter.
And that's up and down. Well, so is everybody's backyard, I think. And just a last comment, we spoke about needing a new roof on this building, which I know we do. I'm asking that we consider some, the possibility of solar panels on the roof. And we also need a new electrical panel. So it seems to me that that would be a perfect time to pair the two. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if it will take some panels, but I do know that they're a lot lighter than they used to be. So, I, you know, I mentioned this to the, to the council president, and he had said, you know, maybe sometime in the future, we can bring this up for discussion. But I don't know where we are with, I know that I think John was getting some quotes. I know that it's dire, but I think we should think about taking the opportunity because I understand that the electrical panel is an extremely dangerous situation.
It is, and John has been getting some quotes for the roof and the electrical panel, but we're up against the possible need to have our engineering department come in and look at these items and possibly come up with a schedule of something that we may have to put out to bid. I do feel if we're going to even think about the idea of solar panels, we certainly need to know if the roof is able to, you know, handle that type of weight, if any, or if it, you know, being that it's a flat roof and so forth, you know, if there are any informational items as to what is allowable and what would not be allowable, what would be advantageous and what would not be advantageous. So, I was hoping either the next agenda or even the agenda after that to have some information for our council to make some decisions as to whether we would utilize our engineering company to provide us, to do a review and provide us some information as to what the costs could be and what the needs are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one thing. So everyone knows that there's potholes over there in front of LaVilla by the railroad tracks as you're trying to get onto Route 1 South. So PennDOT has said that the federal law states the railroad is responsible for the repairs. And when the railroad was replacing the ties, they said PennDOT was responsible for the repairs. So they're, I guess, going back and forth. PennDOT said that he will be checking with the railroad and will advise as to what will happen there.
You said Pennsylvania Avenue, right, Helen?
South Pennsylvania Avenue by the, by LaVilla, right?
Dodge those potholes.
I go home every day, yeah. Whether you're going north or south on one, you have to hit the potholes.
Yes, yes.
Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. See you next week.